It is now seven o'clock PM, and I will call the meeting to order. Can I please get a roll call?
Vice President Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Blakely. I'll come back, Counselor Forbeck.
Here.
Counselor Keys.
Here.
Counselor Levy. I'll come back, Counselor Preschel.
Here.
President Duncan.
Here.
Counselor Blakely.
Here, by telephone.
Okay, Counselor Levy. Was on earlier, he tested his mic. I do have six present, and we'll check back with Counselor Levy.
Counselor Levy says he's not hearing anything.
Uh-oh.
Need to make sure that we talk loudly into the mics, we have a different setup tonight.
I'll turn myself up. Counselor Levy, can you hear me now?
Um, there's an echo, but I can basically understand you. This is Sherry.
Thank you. We do have a quorum.
Since we are experiencing technical difficulty at this time, we'll move forward. Counselors that are listening, can you please mute your phones? And at this time, I would like to ask everyone to please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Under special orders of the day and announcements, there is a proclamation recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month, observed September 15th through October 15th, 2020. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to recognize the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas the observation began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson, but was expanded by President Ronald Reagan to cover a 30-day period and enacted into federal law on August 17th, 1988, calling upon public officials, educators, librarians, and all people of the United States to observe this time with ceremonies, activities, and programs. And whereas the 2018 U.S. Census estimates that nearly 20% of Beloit's population are Hispanic or Latino residents. And whereas these Hispanic and Latino residents play a unique and vital role in our economy and workforce, as well as our education and faith communities. Now therefore, the President of the Beloit City Council proclaims September 15th, 2020 through October 15th, 2020, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Beloit, and encourages residents to observe this month with the theme Hispanics, be proud of your past, embrace the future, and celebrate the achievements and contributions of Hispanic Americans. Presented this eighth day of September, 2020, Regina Duncan, President.
Thank you, Clerk Stotler. Next, I would like to move Item 12A up on the agenda as we have guests in the audience who do not have other business, and this action also includes a special announcement. At this time, I would like to invite Stanley, otherwise known as Curly Thompson of the United States Marine Corps, and Chapter Presidents of the Beloit, Rockford, Montford Point Marines, and other members of the chapter, to please come forward, but please keep your distance behind the podium.
This evening, we have Resolution 2020-144, designating Short Street with the honorary name Monford Point Marine Street. City Manager Luther.
Thank you. The City Council has a past practice of recognizing distinguished individuals who have made extraordinary contributions to the nation and the Beloit community. The honorary designation of street names publicly recognizes these exceptional individuals and groups. As such, Curly Thompson contacted the Council President and me, and he has been very patient with us. It is my deep honor to read the resolution before the Council this evening. A resolution designating Short Street with the honorary name Monford Point Marine Street. Whereas, the City Council of the city of Beloit has a history of recognizing distinguished groups who have made extraordinary contributions. And whereas, the honorary designation of street names publicly recognizes those groups. Whereas, the charter members of National Monford Point Marine Association, Beloit, Wisconsin, Rockford, Illinois, Chapter 41, veterans representing Army, Navy, Air Force, and Marines, met at 201 Short Street. And whereas, President Franklin D. Roosevelt issued an executive order 8802 establishing the Fair Employment Practices Commission on June 25th, 1941. And whereas, the first opportunity for African-Americans to enlist and serve in the Marine Corps came in 1942 as the Corps began to recruit qualified African-American men. And whereas, approximately 20,000 African-American men received basic training at Monford Point Camp, New River, North Carolina, from August 26th, 1942 to October 19th, 1949, during a time and place where racism and segregation were a part of everyday life. And whereas, President Harry S. Truman on July 26th, 1948, issued Executive Order 9981 establishing the President's Committee on Equality of Treatment and Opportuny in the Armed Forces. And whereas, despite the challenges presented to those Monford Point Marines during World War II, their valor, loyalty, and service in the face of prejudice and discrimination paved the way for our present integrated armed forces. And whereas, on November 11th, 2011, the 112th Congress of the United States of America unanimously passed Bill HR 2447 to grant the Congressional Gold Medal to Monford Point Marines, the highest award bestowed upon a civilian for their service. And whereas, on November 23rd, 2011, President Barack Obama, the 44th President of the United States of America, signed Bill HR 2447 into law to award the Congressional Gold Medal to the Monford Point Marines. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Beloit, Wisconsin, hereby designate Short Street to carry the honorary Monford Point Marine Street name. And be it further resolved that this change will result in the posting of signs mounted above the existing Short Street signs, and that the official name of the roadway shall not be altered, nor shall any address or other documentation be altered as a result. Upon adoption, an unveiling of this new sign is scheduled for Saturday, September 26th of this month.
Thank you, City Manager Luther. At this time, counselors, can I please have a motion to approve this resolution?
I so imp...
Okay, it was moved by Counselor Forbeck, seconded by Counselor Blakely. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, Madam President.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I think it is such a wonderful idea to honor these men who stood strong for us for more than a decade. Thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, but certainly I think we all are saying with great honor and enthusiasm we're going to pass this. Thank you.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Only to add that I am thankful the city is able to provide this distinguished group of veterans with this wonderful honor, and it will really help bring history alive via this tribute to be part of our everyday lives, and thank you for your service.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Preschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to learn some history and appreciate yet another sacrifice made by people when it was, when times were much tougher than they are now and much greater sacrifices were asked. So it's a wonderful history lesson, it's an opportunity to continue to remember that. Thank you.
Okay. And I would just have a comment. Our council is proud to designate Short Street with the honorary name Monford Point Marine Street for their valor and service to our nation and Beloit community. I also want to commend Stanley Curly Thompson, who led this effort, and congratulate him on being named the National Sergeant at Arms for the National Monford Point Marine Association. We have so much gratitude for you, Curly, and all the men and women who have served, and we applaud you. At this time, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Preschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously?
And I would just like to add, Curly, if you would like to speak at this time, and if some of the gentlemen would like to speak, that'd be wonderful, and you're not required to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but it passes, and we are so happy for you.
And as Curly comes forward, I will show you, we have a small commemorative sign. These were made in-house by our Public Works employees, and it is my honor to be able to give one to each of the participants and members here this evening.
If they want to hold the sign up, I'll get a photo for them. If they'd like to, if you guys want to get a photo real quick with the, come up front real fast, I'll just get it from here. You can stand apart, and I'll get your photo. Yeah, if you stand apart, I'll get your photo for you, and I'll send it to you. Yeah.
And, well, ooh, we got to be six.
They got to stand apart. There you go, there you go. That's fine. Got it.
Good evening, everyone. To the City Manager Lori Luther, City Council President Regina Duncan, to the council members and citizens of Beloit. It is truly an honor to stand before you tonight. Sometimes it's difficult to express the gratitude that people have finally shown are brave men and women who have served in all the wars. Of course, this evening, we acknowledge a special group of men who were given the opportunity to serve in the segregated armed forces. Our organization is open, like the VFW and American Legion, to all branches of the military. Tonight, I have with me the gentleman who was standing behind, to my immediate right, was CLH Johnson, Senior, who was our past president, our first president of our chapter, and currently our judge advocate. The other gentleman is our treasurer, Mr. Steve Shoraka. Calvin and I served in the Marine Corps, Mr. Shoraka served in the Air Force. As is stated, as the City Manager read, our organization is open to all branches. And I can't tell you how moving it is to have this honor bestowed upon our organization as a whole. In fact, there are other streets, a year ago today, City Council President appeared, Beloit City Council President appeared in Rockford when we honored Mr. Homer Hemsted, who was the first African-American to join the Marine Corps from Rockford, Illinois. And that was on September 14th, and here it is. A year ago, a year later, that we're doing it here in Beloit, Wisconsin. It is an opportunity to show that we can recognize folks who've served our nation regardless of where they're from. Once again, it's a great honor to come before you this evening, to all of you who are in the sound of my voice, and those who will see this viewing, thank you so very much. God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do have, for the record, a press release from May 19th of 2014 that discusses that during the summer of 2012, the survivors of Monford Point Marines were honored in Washington, DC with Congressional Gold Medal. We will keep that in the record for you.
Curly, I don't know if you heard that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, wanted to make sure.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so very much.
Again, thank you all, gentlemen, for your service. We appreciate you. Thank you. Let's give them a hand. Thank you.
Clerk Stotler.
Moving on to public hearings, there are four. Under 4A, we have consideration of Resolution 2020-138, approving a conditional use permit to allow a pickup window in a C3 commercial, Community Commercial District for the Beloit Public Library property located at 605 Eclipse Boulevard.
At this time, our Community Development Director Julie Christensen will provide an overview.
The Beloit Public Library currently has three book return slots on the south side of their existing building. As shown on the materials in your packet tonight, their proposal is to convert one of the book return slots into a pickup window to be used by customers who have reserved books in advance. The affected portion of the site is already designed for drive-through functionality and includes five stacking spaces, as shown on the site plan. This project is distinct from the renovation of other parts of the library facility. This property is owned C3, which requires a conditional use permit for any drive-in or drive-through uses. Plan Commission reviewed this item on August 19th and voted unanimously to recommend approval, subject to the two ordinance requirements included on the attached resolution. And the resolution would authorize the conditional use permit, and then formally advises the applicant that they will also need the contractor to obtain an architectural review certificate and building permit prior to beginning construction, and that in accordance with Section 2-506 of the zoning ordinance, the applicant shall have 12 months from the date of conditional use permit issuance to complete construction and commence use of the window, or the conditional use permit shall lapse and be of no further effect. And Plan Commission did recommend approval of this resolution before you tonight.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is open. Would the clerk treasurer please provide any public input received?
I did not receive any public input on this particular hearing.
Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward at this time. Final call. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward. The public hearing is now closed. Can I please have a motion to approve the resolution?
Counselor Keys.
Moved by Counselor Forbeck, seconded by Counselor Keys. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Uh, no, I do not.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion? Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
My comment is just to say that I appreciate all efforts to improve accessibility of community resources while minimizing exposure to COVID-19, and this certainly does that, and I'm thankful for the work and efforts, and initiative to help make this happen.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Preschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion? I just have a comment. The proposed project will enhance the functionality of the Beloit Public Library during the pandemic, and it also meets our strategic goals three and four. It creates and sustains economic and residential growth, and it creates and sustains a high quality of life. So this is a good thing for Beloit. At this time, we have a motion and a second. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Oh, good, thank you.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Preschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Under 4B, we have consideration of an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment from C3, which is Community Commercial District, to PUD, which is Planned Unit Development District, for the properties located at 1405 Cranston Road and 2213 Advanced Drive.
And at this time, our Community Development Director Julie Christensen will also provide a brief overview.
A Planned Unit Development Master Land Use Plan for this site was previously approved on July 6th, 2020, with six conditions for the proposed request. That plan is included in your packet this evening. There is a three-step process for any Planned Unit Development. The first is approval of the plan, which you've already done. The second is approval of the rezoning to Planned Unit Development District. And then the third is a site plan, a final plan or site plan review process. This applicant is requesting multiple buildings on one combined parcel. An additional building will be added to the car wash facility along a portion of the land to the north. And planning staff is currently in the process of reviewing detailed site plans for this expansion project. And this will add, obviously, additional construction on Cranston Road. But they're also going to be approving the site, so you'll have some upgraded sidewalks, parking spaces, and things such as that. Plan Commission reviewed this application on August 19th and voted unanimously to recommend approval. This is on your agenda this evening for a public hearing and first reading.
Thank you, Julie. At this time, the public hearing is open. Would the clerk treasurer please provide any public input received?
I did not receive any public input on this particular item.
Thank you. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward. Final call. Would anyone else wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward at this time. The public hearing is now closed. This is a first reading. Can I please have a motion to lay over this item?
I so imp...
Moved by Counselor Blakely, is there a second?
Uh, Counselor Keys will second.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Keys. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't, thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Preschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't.
At this time, there is a motion to lay over the ordinance. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Preschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Under Item 4C, we have a public hearing to solicit input on the city of Beloit, Wisconsin Water Pollution Control Facility's plan?
At this time, our Director of Water Resources, Bill Frisbee, will provide an overview and introduce the city's consultant. There will be no action on this item tonight.
Hi, thank you. For the last 18 months, the city of Beloit Water Resources has been working with Strand Associates doing a thorough evaluation of the existing equipment and processes at our wastewater treatment plant, and we've been evaluating future needs to ensure we meet regulatory requirements for the next 25-year planning period. And as a result of this, we have developed a facility plan with recommended upgrades. The full facility plan is posted on our website at beloitwi.gov/utilities, and it is open for public comment through September 21st at 11:00 AM. Written comments can be delivered to myself, Bill Frisbee, Director of Water Resources, at 2400 Spring Brook Court, or they can be emailed to me at frisbiew@beloitwi.gov. And with me tonight is Randy Langer from Strand Associates to walk you through the presentation.
All right, thank you, Bill. And thank you to the Beloit City Council for having me tonight. So I'm going to walk through the presentation that describes, provides a summary of the facility's planning effort and the results of it. You want to go ahead to the next slide? So just a brief outline. We're going to first talk about the history of the water pollution control facility. We're going to talk about some of the needs out at the facility and the drivers for the projects that we've identified. Then we're going to talk about the recommended plan and costs for that plan, and then close with the next steps for a project like this, as well as the schedule for those steps. So first, I want to describe what is facilities planning? So facilities planning is required by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for any, basically any significant project at a wastewater treatment facility. The goal or the intent of a facilities plan is to develop a plan that provides, to show how the facility can provide reliable wastewater treatment capacity for the city's entire service area for a 20-plus-year period. You use the facilities plan to identify alternatives that can accommodate future growth in that 20-year period and beyond. So, you know, also want to plan for even beyond that and align the city for even further growth beyond the year 2045. Then also, you evaluate various alternatives with the goal of identifying the most cost-effective alternatives to implement that have the least environmental impacts and have sufficient flexibility to meet future demands. Those demands could be regulatory and as, as changing affluent limits, or they could be additional capacity needs. So this is an overview, an aerial photo of your, of your water pollution control facility. The, the processes and structures in blue are what we call the Forward Flow Facility. So this is basically the liquid treatment process. Those in that orange-ish-yellow color are the biocellulose treatment processes. Most of these were put in service when the plant was originally constructed on this site in 1992. There have been a few additions over the years. First was a second sludge storage tank, shown in the upper part of the photo there. That was added in 1997 to increase biocellulose storage capacity. There was also some odor control improvements and some improvements to biocellulose handling that was completed in 2010. And then most recently, mixers were added to the... was completed in 2010. And then most recently, mixers were added to the anaerobic digestors and a building to house those mixers and the related equipment was constructed, uh, just wrapped up last year. So there are a number of needs and drivers that, uh, that really triggered this facility's planning effort. And in summary, those are plant age, so the age of the facility, it's, it's creeping up on thirty years old. And as a rule of thumb, we typically, we typically say that wastewater treatment equipment, not the structures necessarily, but equipment lasts about twenty years. You've gotten a good life out of a lot of that equipment. Some of it is, uh, nearing or has, has surpassed its useful life, so we wanted to understand what equipment needs to be replaced. There are also some structures that need repair due to corrosion and, and things like that. Another key driver is projected growth, and this is growth not only with, with, uh, the residential population, but or significantly, uh, or has more of an impact with your significant industrial users. Also look at commercial, institutional growth. There's also regulatory changes. Many of you have probably heard of the, uh, phosphorus, uh, changes that have been discussed in, uh, over the past several years. The Beloit will have to deal with that, as well as there's things that we see coming, uh, in, in, you know, in the near future, as well as even farther out that we want to account for and plan for. And then we also want to look for energy and operational efficiencies as part of the, or as part of the facilities planning process. So we do, as part of this, as part of this facilities plan, you do a very thorough process, review of all the processes, structural items, mechanical items. You evaluate the electrical components, and throughout this, you identify the priorities and the needs at the plant. Um, first, on the upper left there, is looking at the age and condition of the, of the infrastructure. So we went through with, with staff and, and reviewed all the major equipment and ancillary components and identify what are the major issues, what equipment is near the end of its life or has reached the end of its life and needs repairs. We also use the process to prioritize those items so that we knew which ones were, uh, in highest need. Then we also look at, as I mentioned, future capacities. So we go through, we project future flows and loadings, and then we compare those future flows and loadings to all your processes at the treatment plant and identify, are there any that do not have adequate capacity to meet those future demands? As I mentioned, we also looked at, for energy efficiencies and operational efficiencies, and I'll talk about these on this slide. Uh, so there are selective equipment replacement that do provide significant, uh, improved energy efficiency and reliability. The most significant of these is that photo on the upper left. That shows one of the existing aeration blowers. These are the largest energy user at the facility. These are, uh, uh, older equipment. They're not as, nearly as efficient as newer, uh, equipment that would replace these, uh, an example of which is shown on the bottom left there. So that is one, uh, significant item that will significantly improve energy efficiency. On the right are a couple pieces of equipment that are, again, just outdated and, uh, reached the end of their useful life and are just, uh, due for a replacement. So the projected growth, uh, amongst the significant industrial users requires additional biological capacity. So as I mentioned, we walked through each process, and the, the one that really stands out and would need, that would need added capacity to meet those future demands would be the aeration basins, shown on the bottom right here. So what we do, if you go to the next slide, is for these major components, we look at a number of alternatives, and we compare those alternatives on a present worth basis. So we take into account capital costs, replacement costs of that equipment, operation and maintenance costs over the twenty years, and then any salvage value, if there's any value left after twenty years. What that allows us to do is compare them on an apples-to-apples basis. So we looked at two alternatives. Uh, they were actually quite similar. One, alternative AS1 was to expand the activated sludge system, basically replicate what you have at, at fifty percent capacity, so two more tanks to the four tanks that are there. The second is just a slight variation of that that changes the biological phosphorus removal component of it to a slightly different process. Uh, they had very similar costs. AS1, alternative AS1 was about twenty-four million on a present worth basis, alternative 2 slightly more than that. However, uh, it was decided to move forward with alternative AS1 due to that slightly lower cost, as well as if, if, uh, changes to the biological phosphorus removal system are needed in the future. That's something that could still be implemented in the future for, for minimal cost. Another major area that we looked at for improvements was with affluent disinfection. So prior to being discharged back to the river, the, the treated water is further treated by the disinfection process. It kills pathogens, viruses, bacteria. Right now, that's completed using chemicals. Sodium hypochlorite, as well as, uh, sodium bisulfide is used to, uh, in that process as well. There are, you have to store a lot of that chemical on site, several thousand gallons. It, 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 uh, it's, it's not ideal from an operations perspective. Um, there's some safety concerns. In addition, this process is actually slightly undersized for your peak flows. So it would require to, to comply with code, it would require us an expansion to the system. So we looked at, if you go to the next slide, we looked at two options here as well. One was to basically maintain that process, but expand it so that it would meet code. And then alternative D2 was to change that process to ultraviolet disinfection. So now instead of using chemicals, you're using UV light to kill those pathogens and disinfect the water. On a present worth basis, the ultraviolet disinfection was actually, uh, three million dollars, which was quite a bit more than the 1.8 to expand the existing system. However, it was decided to move forward with ultraviolet disinfection, and that's for two reasons. One, um, well, two main reasons. One is the safety aspect, and the other is that the existing chemical storage area and those tanks could be used in the future for future phosphorus removal chemical storage. So it would prevent, it would prevent the, the, the need for that future capital project, which if we incorporated that into these costs, it would flip this, and the UV disinfection would be significantly less expensive. Next slide, please. Next, we got into the bio solids program, and there's, there's several pressures on that existing bio solids management program that, that has resulted in increasing costs, uh, namely those are very short land applications windows as a result of, of wet weather in the spring and fall. And, uh, all of your bio solids, ideally, your, all of your bio solids would be land applied as a, a liquid. It's injected onto farmland. Unfortunately, though, the time between when it dries up enough from when the farmers plant in the spring is so short that it leaves a very small window to apply those bio solids, and it's very difficult to get all of them out of these tanks. And then the same is true in the fall. After the crops are off, there's a very short window between, before it gets either, before it freezes or it's too wet. So that's, uh, resulted in significantly more cost for this program, as of lately, has required the city to landfill quite a bit of those bio solids. Um, in addition, you've probably heard of purr and polyfluoroalkyl substances, more commonly referred to as PFOS, and there's other pollutants of emerging concern that there's a lot of uncertainty and unknowns regarding how those will be dealt with and the regulatory requirements concerning them. You know, there's big questions about will those land application programs even be allowed. So those two main pressures for, uh, led us to look at a few alternatives for bio solids management on the next slide here. The first would be to basically continue with the program as it is now, but to add capacity would mean adding more bio solids, man, bio solids application equipment, as well as adding storage, so that you could store more and have more flexibility for those windows when you, those seasons when you can't get all those bio solids out. The second that we looked at was de-watering all of the bio solids. So now instead of a liquid, you'd de-water it and get it to about twenty to twenty-five percent solids, and it's more of a, a soil-type product. We call it a cake, and that would be stored off-site due to odor concerns and then land applied. And then the third thing we looked at was bio solids drying. So this takes that cake product and further dries it to about ninety percent solids. So it's a very, very dry product, is that significantly reduces the volume of that sludge. These alternatives had, uh, varying present worth costs, um, that you could see there, and alternative B3 was selected, bio solid drying. It was about ten percent more than the lowest alternative, but has significant benefits. As it, uh, if you go to the next slide, it, it really provides a much more sustainable and confident program, a long-term program for bio solids management. So again, it significantly reduces the volume of the bio solids. It produces a Class A product, which means it can be, it can be given away to the public. It can be given away to farmers, landscapers. It provides a lot more outlets for disposal of those bio solids. Now you're not limited to those short windows or, you know, limited to taking it to a landfill. And it, again, better aligns the city for compliance with those future regulatory requirements resulting from PFOS and other pollutants of emerging concern. An example of a dryer is shown in the photo there. We also looked at odor control. Odor control is really important at your facility. Um, in general, we don't like to have, uh, you know, orders, uh, significant orders from, treatment facilities. However, with the potential for the casino development immediately next door, we certainly want to be very sensitive to it here. So we looked at a couple alternatives. Um, if you go to the next slide, the first alternative to was to basically replace the chemical scrubber that you currently have. This, this piece of, this process is, uh, again, near the end of its useful life, so we would replace it in kind. The second alternative was to change the process to a biofilter. Instead of using chemicals to remove those odors, it uses a biological process. And alternatives, uh, OC2, odor control 2, that biofilter was selected. It was about the same cost, but it does provide some non-monetary benefits, you know, not having to deal with, uh, the chemicals being one of them. So the, this slide here summarizes the main, um, improvements. On the, starting at the left, you can see where the UV disinfection system would be installed within the existing chlorine, chlorine contact tank. And then the two green boxes show locations for, um, odor control systems. The first, the, with this first project, the one at the bottom would be the one that would be constructed. At the top could be constructed later if the need arose. The red and yellow rectangles there show the additions to the aeration basins. And then the blue, uh, rectangle on the right is in addition to the process building, the drying equipment would be located. Next slide. This slide summarizes the recommended projects in the opinion of capital costs, so what will the project cost to build. The, uh, installation, so alternative AS1, we actually split up on this slide. Um, it, that, the blowers were included in that alternatives evaluation, and we pulled the, the two of the blowers out because if, uh, the city's going to be applying for some funding, and if that funding does not materialize, it's possible that the activated, the aeration basin additions could be deferred to a future year pulled from the project. So that's, uh, why alternative AS1 there is split up into two lines. The UV disinfection was about three million dollars. The bio solids drying process is, uh, about thirteen millions, uh, eight hundred thousand. The biofilter, about one and a half million. And then there's a number of common improvements. This includes a number of, of equipment replacement items, you know, replacing those, uh, several pieces of equipment that have just, they're just beyond their, their, uh, the end of their useful life. And then there's a number of improvements that were identified for six to ten and eleven to fifteen years from now. So the total for this first, uh, project is about forty-two million, uh, five hundred thousand. These costs are in, are in second quarter, twenty, twenty dollars. Uh, if we take that total project cost and inflate it by a few percent per year, uh, at the time the project would bid, which would actually be probably 2022, I apologize for that, uh, the project costs would be about forty-five million dollars. And then the remainder of this table shows where the funds for that project could, could come from. The first would be the, the vehicle replacement fund, and this is actually specific to the bio solids application equipment replacement fund. There's money in there to replace that equipment. It would no longer be needed if you moved to a drying process, so about a million and a half there. There's some reserves in the, uh, the wastewater fund that could be applied to the project. It's also anticipated that there'll be some future accumulated surplus revenue of about six million dollars. This would be based on the projected rate increases that I'll talk about on the next slide. And then it's anticipated that it could receive about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in clean water fund principal forgiveness, which is essentially a grant. This is estimated because that program does change annually. As I mentioned, the, uh, city's pursuing an EDA grant. Again, this is estimated about three million dollars. And then the remainder of that balance would be funded with a clean water fund loan for twenty, a little over, uh, about twenty, twenty-eight million, six hundred thousand. Next slide. So that, that loan would obviously need to be paid back. You'd have a new debt service payment. That payment would be, uh, covered by an increase in revenue, which would result from a proposed, proposed rate increases. The total rate increase that would be required is about seventeen and a half percent. The, that could be implemented over the course of, of four years. The first principal payment on that loan would not be due until year 2024, when the project is substantially complete. So in 2021, you could do a three percent rate increase, followed by three consecutive years of four and a half percent rate increases. The total increase on an average residential monthly bill would be about five dollars and forty-eight cents per month. And this slide summarizes the schedule for the next steps of the project. Submittal of the final facilities plan would occur after the public comment period closes, so that would be submitted this month. Design would start next month. One of the first things with design would be to complete a survey as well as soil borings. And then that would leave about eight months to complete the design. So that it could be submitted to DNR in July of 2021. The, um, we would anticipate, based on the review time, that you'd have, uh, approval of those drawings and specifications in October of 2021. Once that, once we have DNR approval, you could publish an advertisement to bid in November of 2021, which would allow for a bid opening in early December of 21, which would be a really ideal time to bid a project like this, because you're going to have a lot of contractors that are looking for, to fill their schedules for the next year and beyond. And then it also allows first construction to start right away when the weather starts to cooperate in spring of 22, so you'd be able to take advantage of that full construction season. And we anticipate this to be a little over a two-year construction project, completing it around June of 2024. And that concludes my presentation. Thanks again.
Thank you very much for that presentation, and thank you for a great job and, um, for ensuring the safety of our water resources. It's important that we have clean water. We need clean drinking water. We need water to take baths and showers, as well as for our agriculture and economy. So job well done. Thank you very much. Next, we'll go to 4D.
Do you want to open the public hearing and then close it? Did we need to do that or is it just input?
I think it was just for input, for information tonight.
The clerk's office did not receive any input in writing either.
Can I have a quick question on that?
Just a moment. Okay. We'll back up and we will open the floor up for public comments at this time on this issue. If there's anyone wishing to speak.
President Duncan?
Yes.
Do you want me to, um, summarize the staff report and then read the public comments that we've received?
Just a minute. Clerk Treasurer, where are we at at this point?
So we need to do the public hearing, Terry, on 4C before we can move on to you. So stay, stay put for just a minute. No problem.
Yeah. There will be no action on this item tonight, but at this time, we'll open the floor for comments on this particular subject. At this time, uh, if there's anyone wishing to speak, would you please come forward at this time?
I just have one quick question. It had the average, uh, residential cost going up. Do they have anything about the average business?
Greg, can you state your name and address for the record and then go ahead with your question?
Uh, Greg Hatley, 435 East Grand Avenue, Beloit.
Okay, and go ahead with your question again.
I'm just wondering if they have any numbers on, um, the average price increase on what the business end would be. You had the residential, but nobody said anything about the business part of it. I'm sure there's got to be some numbers for that.
Okay. Bill, did you all get that question?
I got the question. Um, at this point, we haven't figured out exactly what the rate structure will be, but we anticipate being ver- fairly similar with the three percent proposed for next year and four and a half percents in the future years. If you would like me to, I can get in contact with you, Greg, and we can talk through any particular property that you have and what the rate impact would be.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Would anyone else wishing to speak in favor or oppose, please come forward at this time. Will you please state your name and address for the record?
Mary Ann Sfam, 1131 Richard Street, Beloit. Um, I'd like to know, you mentioned about a three percent increase the first year and four and a half percent increases in and 4.5% increases in future years. Is this a done deal or is it going to be discussed? You know, is it, are the citizens going to have anything to say about this? Or is our rates just going to increase?
City Manager Luther, can you please answer that question?
Thank you. Excuse me, please. The purpose of this evening's public hearing is to do just that, to solicit input. We have a proposal for needed infrastructure improvements at the plant. At the next meeting on the 21st, the item will be back before the council for their formal decision.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager Luther. Mary, did you have another question at all?
Yeah. Is it, is it going to be put forth into the public eye so that everybody knows that they have, can have some input on this before it's decided?
Okay. I have City Manager Luther to answer that question.
That is why the item was posted publicly on the agenda for this evening with the attachments. It is also why our director indicated that the plan in its entirety is on the city's website and fully available for viewing.
Go ahead with your next question, Mary.
And what about those of us that do not have the capability to look at the city's website? I think that if our rates are going to be increased that much for so long of a period of time, we should receive a letter in the mail that announces this and announcing when that public hearing is going to be so that everybody that's affected can know about it and have a chance to speak.
Thank you, Mary, for your input. City Manager Luther, did you have something to add, please?
Just simply that the city council meetings are always advertised publicly. They're always available on our city's website. You can also have access at the city's public library as an opportunity and the documents in their entirety are available to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Luther. Would anyone else wishing to speak in favor or opposed, please come forward at this time. Final call. Would anyone wishing to speak tonight, please come forward at this time. That is now closed. Next, we'll go on to item 4D.
Okay. We have a public hearing to solicit input on the transit development plan and the proposed major route changes.
At this time, our deputy community development director, Teri Downing, will present. There will be no action on this item tonight.
Thank you, President Duncan. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The Beloit Transit System completed development of a transit development plan, which is required every five years of all public transit agencies. TDP assesses the public transportation needs of the community and the effectiveness of its current and past route systems. The TDP was commissioned by the State Line Area Transportation Study, or SLATS, and took an expanded look at the regional transportation needs of the greater Beloit State Line area. As a result of this study, Beloit Transit System is proposing a completely new route system, which is outlined within the Transit Development Plan. A public hearing is required anytime there's a major change in the fixed route public transportation system. Staff held three public information sessions to solicit input from passengers and other interested parties. The dates of those public outreach dates and locations of those public outreach sessions are listed in your staff report. And council will take final action on this TDP and proposed routes during the regularly scheduled council meeting on September 21st, 2020. If you recall, I think it was two council meetings ago, we did have a workshop on the new routes. James and I went through the routes and, in detail, and with the council and explained our rationale behind those. Those routes are also attached to the staff report in case you have any further comments. I also, the entire plan was out for a 30-day public comment period, so we did receive 20 comments on the plan that I will read for you when, after I'm done with the staff report. The full Transit Development Plan could be viewed at beloittransit.com if anybody wants to still view that. Before I read the public comment period, or public comments, I do want to point out that we did receive a lot of verbal comments about, if you recall, we are doing two kind of inner loops in the city, a west side inner loop, east side inner loop, and then a large outer loop that will have three buses. And we did receive a lot of comments about how long that route was. So we are looking at breaking that route up instead of having one long route. We're looking at options to break that up a little bit just to make sure that passengers can get, so they don't have to ride that route for about an hour and a half in order to get to the other side of town. So based on the public comments, both written and verbal, we are making some adjustments. President Duncan, I don't know if you want me to go through the conformance with the strategic plan or if that's something that you normally do.
Um, if you could give a brief overview, that'd be great.
Okay. So the approval of this agreement would conform with the stated purpose of the following strategic goals. Goal one, to create and sustain safe and healthy neighborhoods. Goal three, to create and sustain economic and residential growth. Goal four, create and sustain a high quality of life. And goal five, create and sustain high-quality infrastructure and connectivity. And if you'd like, I can go through the public comments now.
That'd be great. So what I will do at this point, thank you very much, Teri, for your report, is I would take, open it up for the public at this time.
I believe that Teri has comments that she needs to put into the record.
Does she?
Yes, she does.
Clerk Trezor Sattler, can you clarify, please?
So, so Ms. Downing has 20 written comments that, rather than listen to my boring voice, maybe she can read them. They were collected at one of their public hearings. That'll need to go into the record and then we can open it for the public here.
Okay.
So we have nine comments from passengers that, they provided written comments. And, I'm sorry, 10 comments from passengers that provided written comments. We had nine comments come in through the website because the plan was posted on the website. And then we have one comment from one of our city commissions, which is the Equal Opportunity Commission. The first comment is, I can't read the name. I believe it's Jerome Chazzer. That comment states, there should have been more bus stops on the west side of town. The buses should be, should be operating until nine or 10 at night. They should be operating more often on weekends. Comment number two from a passenger is from Glenn Brenton Jr. His comment is, please consider Saturday service. I run most errands Monday and Saturday. Comment number three from a passenger is from James Sharp. His comment is, need bike racks. Sometimes it would be nice if weather turns bad. Comment number four from a passenger, Trevor Gilligan. And he says, try going to Machesney Park, Roscoe or Rockton. I like the super route where I can transfer to another bus and get home quick. I like the South Beloit bus so I can get to the Van Gelder and use the service. I believe he's referring to the Gateway Route because that does go into South Beloit to connect to the Coach USA Van Gelder bus. Comment number five is from Linda Watkins, who is a passenger. I work at Walmart until 10:00 PM. It is difficult to find a way home at night. Plus, I live on the west side, near Cunningham School, and an on-demand service would be great. I work five days a week. My brother works at Menards and likes to take the bus to work. He also works until 10:00 PM and has to find a way home. He lives on the west side as well. Having an on-demand service would help us both. Comment number six from a passenger, Richard Ring. He says, good, and we would like to see, to go to Loves Park, Illinois. That would be good. And Walmart in Rockton, Illinois or Roscoe, Illinois. Comment number seven from Susan Ritty. She says, I would, and she's also a passenger, I would like the buses to start earlier in the morning. I live at 933 McKinley Avenue between Portland and Merrill and have to be at Beloit College at 6:00 AM. It's a four-mile walk, difficult in the winter. If they eliminate a bus stop, I wish they would announce it in the Beloit dealing unit. Comment number eight from a passenger, Dwayne Stents. He indicates he's disabled, age 64. He has two comments. One is, the rider asks for extra one-hour time expiration on transfers. And a second comment is, snapper games are evenings, if not early afternoon. Would like to request bike racks so I could ride downtown to games and bike home to Colony Court Pass Hospital and Clinic on the northeast side. Comment number nine was submitted through the city's, through the transit website. The name is just Alexis, no last name, 1332 Highland Avenue. The comment is, take the bus off Highland Avenue. The road is tore up. Everyone parks in the street. There is not enough room for the bus to barrel down the street 30 miles per hour. Go three blocks over to a four-lane road, Sherland Avenue. Comment number 10 was submitted through the Beloit Transit website from Britt Scharinghausen, Scharinghausen. Address, 744 Wisconsin Avenue. The comment is, why is the blue route so long? I've tried using Beloit Transit System to get to the Beloit Clinic before and it ended up taking too long. I imagine you have your reasons, but I, but it makes no sense to me that there's one super-long route that makes a huge loop around the outside of town so that if you need to get to the east or west edge of town, you have to go all the way around. Comment number 11 submitted through the Beloit Transit website from Harriet Everett, 855 Burton Street. Comment, please make sure that the routes cover the work hours per shift for the companies in the Gateway, including Amazon and the Dollar General warehouse area. Comment number 12 was submitted through the city's website, or I'm sorry, the transit website from James Pennawell, 1913 West Grand Avenue. The comment is, I am visually impaired, disabled veteran. Myself and others lived west, lived west of Townline Avenue on West Grand Avenue. Changing the bus stop from Cleveland and West Grand to Townline and West Grand, one block west, will reduce our chance of falling on snow ice in the winter and reduce length of time outside in cold weather waiting for the bus. Thank you. Comment number 13 was submitted through the Beloit Transit website from Melissa Allen, 2027 Cottage Avenue. The comment is, please have a bus go to the Amazon Fulfillment Center by Staples so that people like me who work there, who don't have a car, will be able to go to work. Comment number 14 submitted through this transit website from Stephanie Osbold, 3053 Palmer Drive, Apartment 1. The comment reads as follows, I would greatly appreciate better service to the Gateway area. I recently got a job at Amazon. Having the direct route would vastly improve my commute. I have pretty severe anxiety and am prone to panic attacks to, in certain situations. Unfortunately, being able, being behind the wheel of a car is one of those situations. My mother was an alcoholic. She drove drunk all the time with my sister and I in the car. I can remember many times when I honestly thought that we were going to die. Cars are associated with a sense of terror and helplessness for me. Because of this association, my brain starts to spiral and throws me into a panic. I am, have been working on this problem, but hit a snag when I was laid off due to COVID-19. I lost my medical insurance, so I had to put plans on hold. Now that I have a job at Amazon, I will be getting new medical coverage and will be able to continue. I want to beat this. I need to beat this. In the meantime, improved public transportation will be extremely beneficial. While looking at the proposal, I do have one concern, though. There is not enough weekend service to the Gateway area. Lots of warehouse production and industrial jobs require working on the weekends. Comment number 15 was submitted through the Beloit Transit website. Mark Hall, from Mark Hall at 339 West Grand Avenue. Comment, I hope the new changes will work out for everyone. Comment number 16 from, was submitted through the Beloit Transit website from Jenny Hoopel, 1300 Strong Avenue. Her comment is regarding the new bus routes. To bet that blue route can't be nudged up all the way to Big Hill Park and the Welty Center. Such a valuable community resource. Plus, I bet that blue route is a pretty long ride if you need to get out somewhere there. Couldn't that be broken up a bit? Comment number 17 submitted through the Beloit Transit website is from Ellen Joyce. No address listed. I really appreciate how many aspects of this plan will help members of our poorer neighborhoods access services and jobs. Looking at this as someone who lives near the intersection of Prairie and White, however, it seems to me that I would have to take two buses and make a circuit of the whole city and the Gateway area just to get to the Beloit Clinic. Is there any way that the blue route could have buses going in both directions rather than just counterclockwise? Thank you for your work on this, Ellen. Comment number 18 is from Kurt Reynolds, no address listed. His comment, and this was submitted through the Beloit Transit website. His comment is, I agree with the, with a change as to how the current routes run. I disagree that a price tag of approximately $60,000 additional, $60,000 additional dollars to accommodate the change is needed to be added to the transit budget. At some point in time, a substantial increase is going to be needed to recover some of the costs. There are just too few riders to justify the costs. What is the total dollars from ridership in 2018, 2019 and 2020 to date? Please reply to my question. Thank you. I will reply to Mr. Reynolds' question. He left an email address that I can respond to him. Just to clarify, the proposed route will, is budget neutral. There are no increases. If we wanted to increase the routes to include night service, that's when we would have the additional costs. And that is what is listed in the plan as one of the proposals. Comment number 19 was submitted through the city of Beloit, I'm sorry, the Beloit Transit website from Natalie Brooks, 1136 Central Avenue. Her comment is, new routes should be added for more people to get to work and shop and everyday activities. The last comment, which is comment number 20, that was submitted to Beloit Transit from the Beloit Equal Opportunities Commission. It reads, to whom it may concern, the purpose of the Beloit Equal Opportunities Commission is to take action, study, analyze and recommend solutions with respect to major social, economic and cultural problems that affect people residing or working within the city, including discrimination, housing, education, employment and public accommodations and facilities. As such, it follows that the EOC would like to formally submit a letter of support to Beloit Transit in regards to the proposed changes to the transit plan. Specifically, the EOC is excited to see that proposed changes will address the following concerns. Number one, increase frequency on all day routes to 30 minutes. This will shorten waiting times for the clientele that utilize the buses. This reduced time will clearly benefit the people residing within the city, especially single parents with young children, employees relying on public transportation to go to work, disabled or senior residents that are on a more time restrictive schedule, youth that utilize the buses and many other residents. Number two, the proposed routes will either maintain or increase service connectivity in low-to-moderate income areas, such as the Maryland Hackett neighborhoods. Low-to-moderate income individuals typically rely on public transit and other alternatives, more so than households with higher income. As such, this increased connectivity will greatly benefit the low-to-moderate income residents of Beloit. Number three- Number three, the new routes are easier to understand and reduce the need for multiple transfers. Low-to-moder income residents of Beloit have enough stressors in their lives that dealing with complicated transit roads is unnecessary. The larger routes will make it far easier to reach their destination without spending the entire day on the bus. Number four, finally, the proposed Gateway Route will increase access to employers. Access to the Gateway employers will offer previously inaccessible opportunities for many Beloit residents. Increased access to stable employment is one way in which the City of Beloit Transit Department can reduce discrimination in employment opportunities. In conclusion, the Beloit EOC fully supports the proposed changes to the transit plan. Any changes that can improve transportation and employment access will benefit the residents of Beloit and the community at large. Sincerely, uh, Shanita Ray." I think that's how you pronounce her name, Chair of the Beloit Equal Opportunities Commission. Those were all of the public comments that we received in writing, and just to reiterate, we did get a lot of verbal comments about how long the blue route is, which is the outer loop, so we are discussing internally in response to all of those comments, breaking that route up, so the ride on that route won't be so long. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Teri. And just for the public, City Manager Luther, could you please reiterate what someone would need to do if they wanted to look at the plan, the transit route plan? You had talked about it earlier, about how they can look on the website and the Beloit Public Library access?
Yes, so both the previous plan that was discussed under public hearing and this plan, all documents that are provided to the council for review are available on the city's website. There are attachments on this particular document on the agenda. They are available on the website, on the transit website in its full entirety, and the council will not be taking action on this item tonight, but after the public hearing is concluded, we'll take all of those recommendations and requests into consideration, come back with a revised plan, hopefully on the twenty-first, for the council's consideration at that time.
Thank you very much. And I would also like to thank all the people that sent in those comments. We appreciate that. So at this time, would anyone wishing to speak in favor or oppose, please come forward. Final call. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or oppose to this issue, please come forward at this time. The public hearing is now closed.
Item five is public comments.
We have reached the point on the agenda for residents to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any request at this meeting, but may refer a speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Public comment is a courtesy, and we expect everyone to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Speakers are asked to complete a public comment form or submit an email prior to our meeting. Madam Clerk, were there any public comments submitted prior to our meeting tonight?
Yes, Madam President, there were, and I will read them in the order of the time that they were received in. The first written comment is from Jennifer Lindeman, toll twenty-eight North Wasburn Avenue, Janesville, Wisconsin. "The mask mandate for Beloit or Rock County should not be extended. The state of emergency order that is in place currently is already being done illegally. There can only be one sixty-day state of emergency order put in place by the governor unless the legislature votes to extend it, which they did not. The mask mandate would be part of the illegal state of emergency order if the positive COVID numbers are continuing to increase, and clearly the masks do not work. If they did, then we would not have the increasing positive numbers. The only way to get through and over this COVID situation is to live our lives, go back to normal, not just going, getting used to a new normal. If we continue to feed into all the hype, we will never have a free way of life again. People need to be exposed to become immune and to strengthen our immune systems and let them work as they were designed to. You always stay home or mask the sick, not the healthy. Please stop this political madness that is going on in our communities to help aid the end of the madness in our state and in our country." The next written comment is from Ginger Sanis, also of Janesville. "Please do not vote for the continuation of wearing masks. Vote. No, masks do not prevent COVID. The COVID numbers do not justify government overreach. If a citizen is concerned for their own personal welfare, then by all means, wear a mask. Let the individual decide. Thank you." The third written comment is from Cheryl Hengaveld, thirteen twenty-six Eighth Street. "My name is Cheryl Hengaveld. I'm a resident of the city of Beloit, and I would like to make a public comment to strongly oppose item eleven A on the agenda. It's not the job of city government to force healthcare measures on its citizens. You are not medical doctors. You are not Public Health Department. Even the actual county health department is enforcing these measures. Why on earth are you? If your job is to protect our rights, don't take them away. It is also not your job to force businesses to force healthcare measures on our, on its patrons. Most of the proposed resolution is utter nonsense. You don't need a city mandate to be compliant with the state mandate. There already is a state mandate, so you don't need a city one. Are you planning on ending it when the state mandate ends, since this is one of your reasons for creating it? Speaking of end dates, when is the end date for this? I'm guessing your plan is forever. It's time for you to show the science rather than stating nonsense about irrelevant statistics. Prove your measures are saving lives. Show me one life you saved with these nonsensical measures. You can't because they haven't. Where does this end? What else are you willing to do, law-abiding citizens of Beloit? Are you going to force testing, force a COVID pass, force vaccination, force home removals? This needs to stop now. I would also like to remind you that you work for us, the citizens of the city of Beloit. We, the citizens, demand you stop the overreach and end the unlawful unconstitutional mandate rather than extending it." The third comment is from Megan Miller, eighteen eleven Vista Drive. "Thank you for taking my comment today. I'm writing to express my full support for the city's effort to require masks. Just this weekend, I lost an acquaintance to COVID-19. I think many of you are experiencing frustration and fatigue about the circumstances, and it's easy to lose perspective. But losing my friend was a tragic call to reality for me, and I hope that others do not need to personally experience an irreparable life loss, to recall why we need continued solidarity and caution as we work to establish a new normal. It is so important to get our numbers under control so that we can rely on testing and contact tracing to make it safer to regain the normalcy that so many of us are missing. While cases continue to increase, we cannot regain the normalcy that we desperately seek. I'm thankful to live in a community where decision-makers value human life, and I urge you to please continue to make efforts to get COVID-19 under control so we can get back to business as usual. Thank you for your work and your care." The next speaker is Tammy Goldstein, also of Janesville. "I'm writing to oppose a mask mandate. I have a serious, I have to seriously question why the council would choose now to mandate a mask. Last week, for the Centers for Disease Control updated the COVID information. Of the hundred and fifty-three thousand originally listed as dead by COVID, actually ninety percent have passed of some other reason, and four percent were those who actually died from COVID-19, less than ten thousand in the entire USA. The entire narrative regarding COVID-19 has been false. Millions did not die, and now we have almost everyone recovering from the virus. To pass a mandate now would not be based on science but your personal political affiliation. I'm still waiting for the Wisconsin Department of Health to show any scientific studies showing the use of paper mask or the homemade mask provide any protection against COVID-19. I grew up listening to my grandparents tell stories about what it's like, what it was like the Nazis took over. We are seeing that now, a mask mandate today will not improve the situation. I fear it will escalate further. The last comment I'll make is that the level of discrimination against those who cannot wear a mask for health reasons will explode tenfold." The next comment is from Alice Lamont, twenty-four twenty-nine Lathers Road. "It is vital you extend the resolution on the agenda tonight, my friends and relatives in this city, and all those who visit here are dependent on you doing so." A message from Barb Segwin, eleven oh seven Harrison, "I hope city council will extend Resolution twenty twenty-one forty-nine to prevent COVID-19 from spreading in Beloit." An email from Dorothy Harrell, twenty-two eighty-four Boulder Court. "I'm a senior citizen who requires medical attention to stay alive. I'm active in my community and take health concerns seriously. It is my hope that in your position on this council, you will take the same position and protect me and others in Beloit with compromised immune systems and extend the wearing of masks in Beloit. Thank you." She also listed, she is the president of NAACP. Philip Lamont, twenty-four twenty-nine Lathers Road emailed, "It is vital you extend this resolution. My friends and relatives in the city and all those who visit here are dependent on you doing so." Steve Howland of sixteen seventeen Emerson Street wrote, "Given the data, both state and local, on COVID-19, I don't see how the city council could not consider extending the measures to prevent the spread." Kathy McGee of Janesville. "As a resident of Rock County and someone who frequents Beloit, I want to voice my concern over the expanding and extension of the mask mandate. First of all, it is not needed. We are not overwhelmed by COVID cases, and many studies have shown masks don't work. Secondly, Lori is not a medical professional. She has no authority to force measures on us, nor does she have the knowledge to do so. The city council does not have the right to tell businesses to force a mandate on us. Do you realize there are some people who legitimately cannot wear a mask? Whether it's because of mental issues, physical issues, or developmental issues, it's not okay to make those people of your community not even have a choice to go to businesses because you impose such a harsh mandate. My health is my responsibility, and I decide based on what is best for me, along with my doctors. It is not okay for the city to decide what is best for me. I'm vehemently against the extension and expansion of this mandate." Wayne Stein, Steinline, believe of Beloit. "As a resident of Beloit, I'm a hundred percent opposed to any further mandates, period. If, as your claim is, rising hospital case numbers prove it, it would only make the case that you have mandated so far as a failure. The fact that, the fact is, the curve was flattened months ago. Now, this is, this is now a control issue being paraded as a health issue by you." Missy Henderson, seventeen oh five Emerson Street, asked to extend the mask resolution. "It's the one thing we can do to end this nightmare." Deb Fallon of twelve thirty-two Elm Street said, "Please extend all precautions in place for prevention of COVID-19 in the city of Beloit at your meeting tonight. It's imperative that you take action to protect the health of our citizens." Abby Engler, I believe of Clinton. Said, "I'm a frequent visitor to the city of Beloit, living only ten minutes away. I don't believe the extension of the city mask is, mandate is necessary. Based on information polled from Rock County Public Health Department, ending eight thirty-one twenty, there have been a confirmed number of seven hundred and thirty-nine COVID-19 cases, six hundred and forty-four who have fully recovered on the city of Beloit. The mortality rate is one point four nine percent. That equates to the final number of deaths in the city of Beloit to be ten people. Since March, as we know from recent information provided by the CDC, the vast majority of deaths have been in persons with two-plus comorbidities. Why are we instilling this fear into the public? Contracting COVID does not equate to a death sentence. These extreme measures, measures are not warranted, and simply put, it tramples on the rights and liberties our constitution clearly grants to each individual. This mask mandate is far from necessary. I believe every business has the right to require face coverings on their premise, but I do not believe it is our city nor our state's authority to force it upon every business. If someone feels uncomfortable shopping somewhere, they can request other arrangements or simply choose to forego shopping in that establishment, because that is what many of us who have extreme to mild difficulties with masks have had to do. Do not vote this in. It is a breach to fundamental rights. Masks are not saving lives. They are instead suffocating livelihoods." Madison, Madison Elmer, I believe of Walworth. "I would like to bring up the concern that mandating masks are doing more harm than good for the fact that no one handles them properly, which begs the question, are people just complying to avoid confrontation, or do they truly wear them because they believe they work? There's supposed to be a sanitary way to handle a used mask. This does not happen. Sit and watch how citizens handle their mask in public. Most people carry their used mask, balled up in their hand, which spreads whatever germs are on their mask to individual hands and whatever surfaces they touch. People are constantly touching and fidgeting with their mask and face, taking it on and off, which transfers germs closer to our eyes, nose, and mouth. Most people do not wash their mask or dispose after one use. I've seen people take used masks out of their pocket, out of cup holders in their vehicles, drop on the floor, and still use it. Masks that are frequently supplied by businesses are left unattended on tables for patrons to touch and use their bare hands. I see masks literally littering, littering the streets and parking lots. Please open your eyes. In this instance, the cure is making things worse, not better. As you read the Wisconsin Department of Health website, the mask mandate has no positive effect, and we've had our highest positive case count in the past few days since August eighth." The letter came in from the Secretary of the College and Chief of Staff, Daniel Schaff. "Dear counselors and city manager Luther, we understand that today you will consider Resolution twenty twenty-one forty-nine extending the requirements for masks and appropriate social distancing in the city of Beloit in response to COVID-19. Please accept this letter as Beloit College's full support. As we face the challenge of this global pandemic, we know we have a shared responsibility for each other. Our COVID-19 task force and students have helped craft our campus expectation, have adopted the phrase, self-care is community care. Community members can stay up to date with our Back to Beloit efforts at beloit.edu, Back at Beloit. This site also has direct access to our dashboard, displaying the status of our efforts to keep our campus safe. Again, we believe that extending this resolution is the responsible thing to do for this community." Therein ends the written comments, and I do have a few comments, a few people in the audience who have provided me lists. Shall I proceed?
You can go ahead and proceed, and then I would just like to ask, when you're called up to the, when you come to the podium, if you could please state your name and address for the record. Go ahead, Clerk Sotler.
Our first speaker is Jim, is it Nor?
I'm Jim Nor. I live at two eight zero three South Claremont Drive. I'm here to oppose the Resolution twenty twenty-one forty-nine for the mask mandate. I've got numbers here from the county website, and since the middle of March, only twenty-eight people have died around the whole county. This is not a pandemic for Beloit. This is not anything that Beloit needs to be involved with. When you look at the number of cases, you've got eighteen hundred and thirty-nine cases. If you factor a conservative number of eighty percent comorbidities, you're looking at a much lower number. When you look at the deaths with comorbidities, you're looking at about five and a half at eight and a half, or at five percent, eighty percent. When you look at the number of cases and the number of deaths, the flat line is your deaths, very, very flat. Okay, it's not going up. This doesn't need to be voted to extend. When you look at, this is a chart of the current cases, and you've got eight people in the hospital in Rock County, among five hospitals. This is something you guys really need to think about. This isn't just a rubber stamp for the Health Department. And when you look at daily testing, the daily testing numbers show seven times where the testing was above twenty-five percent of tests for that day, and it shows a hundred times where the testing was six percent or below. A hundred versus seven, real numbers from the county. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, for your input. Next. I would, I would just like to ask if the public would just stop with the clapping, and we just want to make sure that we hear and we get the whole picture and we get people's comments when they come up, okay? Next person, please.
Our next speaker is Scott Brydon.
Scott Brydon, five forty-eight Broad Street, Beloit. I really do appreciate all the efforts of everyone on the city council and everything. It's a, gotta be a tough job for you. I do oppose this resolution. It's twenty twenty dash one forty-nine. I have Brydon Motors, Jeep Dodge Ram Chrysler in Beloit, and I also have Brydon Ford in Durand, Illinois. I have roughly sixty employees, somewhere around in there. We've been open the whole time. I provided masks to my employees as soon as they were available. They weren't available immediately. Every employee got a mask. Very few of those employees chose to wear them, but we have a large facility where we can social distance. We will put the masks on if the guests ask us to. We will put the masks on if the guests ask us to, of course. Very few guests ask that or require it. Many guests walk in with masks on, see our employees without theirs, and they'll take theirs off. They'll take them off their kids, and they'll conduct business six feet away, and everything has been working out great. I want to do the right thing. The last thing I want is for my employees to become ill. That would be horrific. But so far, zero have tested positive for COVID-19. And we've been doing things we feel the right way. We don't go on test drives with our guests anymore. We used to do that all the time. We let them go, because there's no need to be in an enclosed space like a car with them. And it's... It just seems like people are people when they don't have their masks on, and when they have them on, it's just a weird vibe. And it just seems that we're... As business owners, we're gonna do things the right way. We're gonna do things that are gonna be positive for us and our community, and I think we should be able to make our own decisions on that. That is my comments.
Thank you for your input. Much appreciated.
Prisha Gustina?
Hi, I'm Prisha Gustina, 1313 11th Street. During this government mandate of masks, I am opposed to the mask mandate. During this governor mandated mask-wearing time, I've been with three different doctors, and none of those doctors wore masks. Okay, I'm... I want to mention, too, that in tracking the COVID-19 for Rock County, the data, again, does not support the fact that the governor mandated mask-wearing was effective. Number two, I personally know some people that did contact the COVID-19. They were people that had very little community exposure, but they did go to work, and their work was very strict about wearing masks, and they still ended up getting COVID, but they just had some mild symptoms. The mask mandate did not help them keep from getting the COVID. Also, personally, I know some people that have had health problems because of the mask and skin problems. That's a real issue right now with... There are people that are breaking out, having skin issues from the wearing and the moisture, and like someone already has spoken regarding adverse health effects, and I truly support most of everybody that was read tonight in their comments. I don't think the government should be... You know, they don't have any plans to help those people that are having issues by wearing the masks, and that just isn't right. In April, I reached out on the CDC website. I made my own masks, which is what I'm wearing. In order to make my mask 80% effective, I needed to buy a dense cotton such as batik and have three layers, which is what I have. The inner layer is flannel. There was very specific guidelines to keep that virus from being able to be released. Bandanas, loose woven cotton, and stretch fabric had absolutely no protection. The only masks... I have actually a picture here of a chart that said the only masks that were effective were the FFP-1s, the N95s, and the surgical masks. Activated carbon cloth masks and sponge masks were absolutely not effective at all. So oftentimes, if you're seeing some of these real cute cloth masks, it very well could be that they're just not up to what they need to be in order to protect that virus from either entering in or going out. It's like one doctor had said, "It's like stopping a mosquito from going through a cyclone fence if you're not using the correct type of material as a mask." Also, I want to say that I feel that the government overreaches our businesses and personal freedoms, and that we, as U.S. citizens, have the right to be able to make our own choices, and the government should not be making choices for us. Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Christine Raleigh?
Good evening, and my name is Christine Raleigh. I live at 1518 Euclid Avenue. I've enjoyed living in Beloit for a little over one year. I am a wife. I am a mom to four children. Firstly, I want to thank you for holding these meetings in person. I really believe in-person meetings are important in allowing for the general public to take part and feel involved in the things happening in the city. It also allows for transparency with what is happening in our city during these hard times. My comments today are in light of reflecting on in my opposition to Item 11A on this evening's agenda. It is of utmost importance to hold a proper perspective in times of crisis. People are prone to heightened emotions and fear when an emergency or crisis happens. Stepping back and viewing the situation from a larger perspective requires the ability to determine what factors are critically important. COVID-19 was a new and unknown virus back in March, when our city was declared to be in a state of emergency. No one knew how deadly it was, nor how many people would be hospitalized because of it. Those were the very real and important concerns we were all focused on. Here we are, almost six months later. According to the Rock County Public Health Statistics, a total of 28 people have died in Rock County with COVID-19. I couldn't find the number of how many of those were from Beloit specifically, but if all 28 were from here in Beloit, that would show that 0.08% of our city has died due to or with COVID-19. I found that number by taking the number of deaths, 28, divided by the population of Beloit, which, according to census.gov, is 36,926, and multiplying that result by 100 to give the number in a percentage. Holding a proper, accurate perspective is crucial in times of crisis. We hear endless reporting of cases, and information zeroing in and breaking down statistics of those numbers. Isn't the underlying and main concern, from a state of emergency standpoint, deaths and an overload of hospitalizations? 0.08% of the population of Beloit is such a minute number, not even 1%, not even half of 1%. I am concerned at the lack of proper perspective displayed through the resources and visuals provided by the city of Beloit via social media. I am concerned with the lack of definition of the goal we are trying to accomplish by wearing masks. We were once told the vague slogan of, quote, "Slow the spread," which more and more I see has subtly changed to, quote, "Stop the spread." Those are two very different end goals, and also neither have ever been fully clarified. I would like to see more statistics showing the number of deaths and hospitalizations in perspective to our local population. These, not merely the number of cases, are what is most important in viewing the danger of this virus with a proper perspective. Only after stepping back, holding a larger perspective, and recalling the main concerns of the COVID-19 crisis, should decisions which lay out necessary actions to accomplish defined goals be made. Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
That's all I have that are currently signed up. There may be others.
Okay. Are there any of the members of the public that would like to speak at this time? If so, would you come forward? State your name and address for the record, please, when you come up.
Hello, my name is Robert Swam. I live at 1131 Richard Street, Beloit, Wisconsin. And I was listening... I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I was listening to the letters that her emails you received, and there was one that really caught my attention. This person said, "We have to get used to the new normal." Then later on, in the same letter, they said, "We gotta get back to the normal." What is that? We gotta... The new normal is what's trying to be established here? And I don't... I just see most people in town will respect businesses if they require masks, and they social... Most people, social distance. So are we trying to establish a new normal so we can get back to normal? And is that new normal, or is the normal that we're trying to get to the new normal or the old normal? It's pretty confusing when you start talking about new normals. So I just think you have to be very careful. We started out talking about 2 million people dying, and that hasn't happened. And granted, it's not good to have anybody die, but people die of a lot of different things during the course of the year, and I think we just need to be careful how much power we give to those who we elect to elected positions. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time? Please state your name and address for the record.
Mary Ann Swam, 1131 Richard Street, Beloit. Okay, I don't feel that you have any legal right to require wearing of masks in private businesses, nor to close business... Private businesses for noncompliance. You can suggest that we wear masks and social distance, et cetera, but you are overstepping your authority to force us to comply. There is no proof that masks stop the spread of COVID. They should be an option. And it's not that I don't care about people. It's that I care about our freedoms, and for you to continue with this forced compliance, you are taking away our freedoms, and that is wrong. So I ask you to not extend this, what is being asked for. End it now. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Are there any of the members of the public that did not sign up that wish to address the council this evening? Please come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Catherine Schrockline, 1124 Olympian Boulevard. Obviously, there are measures that need to be put in place to protect the public and protect the health of people, but as my grandma stated, Prisha, the CDC and a lot of other scientists have done studies saying that these cloth masks that people are wearing, like bandanas and thin fabrics, as she explained, aren't effective at all towards the virus. And if another mandate is gonna be put in place till however long Beloit decides to put it out, if they do decide to, every citizen who requests a mask that is... They need... Every citizen that protect or requests a mask needs to be granted an effective one that is actually going to work against the virus, instead of continuing to have people just wear bandanas and all this stuff. That doesn't work, because there's no point in having a mandate if people are just gonna wear cloth on their face because it doesn't work. So if that's put in place, then yeah, people need to be able to give... Got masks that are effective, especially in a low-income city like Beloit, and that's all.
Thank you for your input. Are there any other members of the public that did not sign up who wish to address the council this evening? Are there any other members of the public wishing to address the council this evening? At this time, public comment is now closed.
We're moving on to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Would any counselor like anything removed from the consent agenda? Can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including 6A through 6J? Is there a motion?
I still move, Nancy Forbeck.
Moved by Counselor Forbeck. Is there a second?
This is Mark Price Forbell. My second, that.
Second by Counselor Prushel. At this time, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions or discussion? I will ask the clerk to please call the roll at this time.
Vice President Anderson. I'll come back. Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
And Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. There are no licenses, ordinances, or appointments this evening, so that leaves us at Item 10, which is Counselor Activities and Upcoming Events.
With that said, I would also like to add, ask counselors to also report on any committees they may have participated in. We'll begin with Vice President Anderson.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick update. First off, I want to thank everybody who's submitting public comments. I know people are very divided on this issue, but it's important that we do hear you, and I appreciate that. The next thing is, I just want to encourage people to enjoy the last few weeks of the farmer's market. That's gonna be coming up to a close real quick, and it's important that you go out and enjoy the way you can. I know this has been a really unusual summer and a real unusual seven months, or however many months it's been, but try to enjoy what you can right now. It's definitely been an unusual year, and I hope we don't have one like this next year. Lastly, just to wrap up my comments, welcome back to staff and students, to school. I know it's not what school is usually like, but hopefully everyone has a good and successful year, and hopefully we do eventually get back in person, because not only do the students want to be in that interaction space, the staff want to be interacting with the kids, too. And that ends my comment. Thank you.
Counselor Blakely.
And I would just like to welcome back Beloit College students, staff, and faculty. And I think it's great that college... That some college personnel sent in their public comments this evening. The college is very important to the community, and it's great to have that give and take. Thank you.
Counselor Forbeck.
Yes, a couple, I guess, comments. First, you did see that our Equal Opportunities Commission did have the opportunity to say thank you, and that we are very positive about the new changes for our citizens who need mass transit. So lots of work has gone into that, and we're aware of it and thankful for it. The second thing is, and I guess maybe this has been at least partial response to some of the public remarks today, and also adding on to Counselor Blakely's comments right now about Beloit College. You know, these students are from all over the world and all over the nation, and there have been some comments, both pro and con, from the parents of the students who were coming here. Some of them were aware that we have a mask ordinance and are very happy, and that was part of the reason that they voted to have their kids come here to Beloit College. And a few saw a number of people downtown who did not have masks on and were just concerned enough to say something to some of the staff at Beloit College. So we need to be aware that people are coming and going all the time in Beloit, and we need to be aware that wearing a mask can actually be a sign that we care about our fellow citizens. That's all. Thank you.
Counselor Keys.
I will start with my comment by seconding the appreciation, and thank you for everyone involved with the public comments. Those are... Public involvement is greatly, greatly valued. And then next, happy first day of school. And then next, happy first day of school to all of our students within the school district of Beloit. This is definitely not how we imagined or would prefer the school year to start, but I truly appreciate all the work and effort of all the administration and staff and the prioritization of health and safety for all of our students and our community. So again, happy first day of school. As far as counselor activities, I attended the Beloit Farmer's Market two weeks ago, and it was bustling. It was, and it was fantastic. And I want to say thank you to everyone who attended and supported our vendors and encouraged folks to continue to, as well as highlight that almost everyone that I saw was wearing a mask, and I felt safe being there myself. I also have continued to volunteer with Beloit Clogging, as well as Friends of the Riverside, and want to extend a large thank you to everyone who volunteers their time to help keep our city clean and beautiful, as well as thank the Beloit Daily News in helping promote these efforts. And then I have no committee updates for this month, and this ends my comments. Thank you.
Counselor Levy.
No report.
Counselor Prushel.
Well, folks, it does look like the Plan Commission has a very full agenda coming up tomorrow night, and Plan Commission meets twice a month and, and reviews proposals forwarded to it by the council like we did tonight in tonight's agenda. I think there's like six or seven items coming up tomorrow. So it'll be a long meeting, and that's a great time for people who have concerns about developments on the agenda to come and to attend. It's an open session, and you were able to, there will be opportunity for your comments there before it even appears at the council meeting. And we appreciate that kind of attention there at that level because we have staff there, and we're still in the formative stages of some of these developments. So it's a great time to offer your input. Thank you. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Prushel. And now my report. First, I want to say thank you to everyone for your input tonight because we certainly welcome public participation. And then I also want to say welcome to the School District of Beloit school students. I know it wasn't the school that you're normally used to, but they started the distance learning today, so welcome. For my activities, I had the opportunity to participate in a welcome video for the Beloit College students, a discussion with WCLO Radio, the groundbreaking ceremony for the Lincoln Academy, and a prayer for justice gathering with In Touch Outreach at Horace White Park, led by Pastor Michael Bell. And I've been active with the Wisconsin State Public Defender Board. That said, I want to give a special thanks to all those individuals and groups who are stepping up to make our community even stronger. I also want to give a shout out to Sarah Millard, our Director of Strategic Communications, for helping us to promote National City Hall Selfie Day and in celebrating the centennial of the Women's Suffrage Movement. Way to go, Sarah, along with our city manager and city staff, who are working so very hard to keep our city efficiently operating each day. You all are the best. Also, I want to encourage the public to please visit our City of Beloit website and Facebook pages for important updates regarding the election, the census, COVID-19, committee vacancies, water resources, public safety, construction, transit, job postings, and much more. And as our city manager shared tonight, if you don't have access to technology, please visit our Beloit Public Library. Also, remember to continue to take the safety precautions necessary to stop the spread of COVID-19, and please be very careful and cautious when driving through construction work zones. This ends my report. Next, we will go to item 11.
And Madam President, I need to point out, I made a typo on that item 11A, and you might see on your old agendas that 2020-103, that should be 2020-127. So consideration of resolution 2020-149 extending resolution 2020-127 related to COVID-19 prevention and control in the city of Beloit. And that staff report and resolution properly reflects, so I do apologize.
So it's the 2020-127. Got it?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. At this time, we will have a presentation from our city manager, Lori Curtis Luther.
Thank you. Citing the Mayo Clinic, "Cloth," and I quote, "Cloth face coverings are most likely to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus when they are widely used by people in public settings. Countries that required face coverings, testing, isolation, and social distancing early in the pandemic have successfully slowed the spread of the virus. While I am not personally a medical professional, the city of Beloit is a partner of the Beloit Health System, and we have a medical director who is employed by Beloit Health who advises us. We have been working closely together and have direct access to recommendations provided by their specialists. These medical professionals agree that widespread use of face coverings in public places, combined with social distancing and preventive efforts like healthy hand hygiene, do indeed slow the spread of COVID-19. Data as of today, there is currently an outbreak in a senior living facility in Rock County. Over the past week in Rock County, two more people have died. And testing positivity rates are very high, with 21% for Rock County and 12% for the city of Beloit over the course of the past week. It is likely no coincidence that many schools in the county are now having in-person sessions. Please note, however, that the Beloit School District is exclusively distance learning. A press release was issued just today from Rock County confirming positive cases of COVID-19 in children in our area schools. In Beloit, there are an additional 50 positive cases compared to a week ago. I would reiterate that provided in the resolution, there is a medical exemption, but some private businesses and city facilities have stricter rules and provide other ways to receive services for those who cannot or choose not to wear face coverings. For all of these reasons, I strongly recommend the approval of resolution 2020-149 extending the local order in resolution 2020-127 to remain effective until the city council meeting on October 5, 2020. I'm available to respond to questions after the council president calls on each counselor."
Okay. And what we will do first is take a, get a motion and a second on the floor, and then we'll bring it forward. Can I please have a motion to approve the resolution, please?
So moved. This is Levy. So moved.
Moved by Counselor Levy. Is there a second?
Back to Nancy.
Second by Counselor Forbeck. We will begin with comments. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Not any questions, but I just, before we do take this vote, I want members of the public to know that whether or not we vote the way you'd like, it doesn't mean we don't hear you or that we care about your opinion. That's not what that means. And I know that it's easy to feel that way, and I'm sure if I was in your shoes, regardless of how this vote goes, I'd probably feel that way too. But still keep reaching out to us, still keep talking to us. Whether or not we do what you want, or that the way you'd prefer it to be, we still need to hear your voice. So keep contacting us. Next thing is, is I do think we do need to have better education. People need to realize, just like any piece of clothing, you need to wash your cloth mask. You can't just keep wearing the same one day after day. That's not good. So just be mindful of that, and please read up on proper mask-wearing etiquette, having it not cover your nose isn't helping anybody, having it below your mouth isn't helping anybody. So that's going to play into how this would be effective. So we all need to keep that in mind. I mean, we're all guilty of it. So just, just keep thinking about that, you know, while we're out in public, making sure that's covering our nose and mouths, and that we're washing our masks regularly on a consistent basis, and then also continue to social distance. Thank you.
Counselor Blakely.
Thank you. I just want to state again that I'm very proud of the citizens of Beloit and all their careful interest and their very articulate letters and comments. I do believe that mask-wearing is an important factor, and if you, if you do, there's so much information out there right now, it's very easy to get confused by all the statistics. So let's all be calm and do what we can to help ourselves and our loved ones and the rest of the community, and just be patient until we can get beyond this pandemic. Thank you.
Counselor Forbeck.
No further comments. Thank you.
Counselor Keys.
I also, I just want to reiterate again, I greatly appreciate all the community participation, and I hear the frustration with having to live within this constant threat of COVID. This is hard on everyone, and we are tired of living in this constant stress of exposure, associated health risk, lost opportunities, especially for youth, as well as financial strain. Myself personally, I, my family has, has felt a lot of these similar challenges and experienced that during this time. And I want to just reiterate, we all want this COVID to get under control and go away as soon as possible. I also want to say that if we look outside the United States and at every country that's been able to achieve COVID-19 containment, we appreciate consistent application of basic pandemic control principles of face covering, social distancing, easy and available expansive testing efforts, isolation exposed with swift contact tracing, and quarantining those newly diagnosed. And although we have lacked consistent and coordinated efforts at the state level and above, we continue, I do want to just continue to highlight, we have support of the Wisconsin GOP Majority Leader regarding local control and local governments implementing these safety measures to help keep our communities safe and healthy. And unfortunately, we have seen statewide and local positivity rates and new case numbers trend upward, and with the Wisconsin Health Services reporting Rock County is having a high case rate right now. So again, it is our responsibility to follow the latest research and best practices available to help us gain control and hopefully get past COVID-19 without any more unnecessary loss of life. And therefore, I remain supportive of this resolution and thankful of our staff for helping with developing measures that allows Beloit businesses to stay open for business while doing everything we can to minimize the spread of COVID-19. Thank you.
Counselor Levy.
No comments.
Counselor Prushel.
I would just like to remind, confirm that indeed we're not changing anything that we did a month ago, and we're not changing anything the state has mandated earlier, and we are acting along the same guidelines the county has. I would love to let the county take the lead on this, but nobody's taking the lead on this. It's down to us, and we must take the lead. And I can complain all I want about the county, or the state, or the national government. It doesn't do any good. Only what matters is what we do here in our own hometown. So I'm going to go along with this resolution one more time, and I hope it's the last time I have to. But we've got to get this thing under control, and it takes sound, kind, conscientious behavior to do that. Be kind to your neighbors, be kind to your friends, be kind to the people around you. And let's knock off all this conspiracy, oh, woe was me stuff, and just get it done and move on. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor Prushel. And now my report. I just want to thank everyone for speaking tonight, and your voices were heard, and I just want you to know that we are all truly in this together. Thank you, City Manager Luther, for your presentation. As the council president, I fully support our efforts to do everything possible to keep our entire, our entire children, everyone, adults, our entire community, healthy and safe, and we must slow the spread of this pandemic. So at this time, there is a motion and a second to approve the resolution. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson. Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prushel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We already took care of item 12A, which leads us to adjournment.
I will now accept a motion to adjourn.